The university turns the air conditioning off at five o'clock. It's now seventy sixty.
Okay, we're ready to go.
Great. Can everybody hear me okay? Good evening. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole from Monday, June eighth. Under item one called order one point one, welcome and roll call.
Weigle? Weigle? Danny, I see you, but we don't hear you. Uh, got it. Thank you. Doctor?
Yeah.
Hear me now.
I can hear you now. Weber?
Thank you.
Marshall?
Here.
Mock? Sandy? And Veen? Councilmember Mock, are you on the, on the meeting?
Yeah, I'm on. Sorry, I'm putting value work.
That's okay. All right. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Welcome, everyone. Under item two, discussion items. On two point one, application for transfer of class four, food and beverage alcoholic beverage license from Rice Empire. Doing business as Sakura to Mizuki, also doing business as Sakura. The store said, good evening.
Yes, thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. As, as Mr. Sandy has stated, the finance department has received an application to transfer. A class four, which is a food beverage license from Rice Empire Incorporated to Mizuki Incorporated, both. Doing business as Sakura located at three two fifty thirty second Avenue South. Rice Empire has, they've held their class four license. And have decided to sell their restaurant and they've notified us that they wish to transfer their license to Mizuki. Application does require. And approval by various city departments, including the city attorney, police, fire, health and inspections department. But it does require city approval as well for the transfer of, of the license. Attached, you will also find with your material is a letter from Rice Empire as well as the application. From Mizuki. I'm not sure what the delay, if we do have representative attending the meeting from Mizuki. If you should have any questions and if he's not, then you have questions, I can always follow up with you. But if you've had a chance to read the staff report and if it meets your approval, we would just ask that you would move this forward to council. With that recommendation or approval, subject of course to the different inspections and application of the fees. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions from the store stood, Mr. Weber?
I believe we've seen these kinds of transfer requests in the past and we've generally always approved them. I'll move approval.
Great. Move second, second by Marshall. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item two point two ordinance, ordinance amending section eight dash fifteen oh three. Paragraph twelve relating to penalty for specified offenses. Mr. Swanson, are you with us tonight?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the committee. We have a conflict that we have identified in our provisions of city code for penalties. We have this particular penalty. Listed twice with two different amounts. I believe the error occurred when we were previously. Overhauling all of the penalties. The ordinance set is in your pack is the correct modification. And we would ask that you give preliminary approval to that ordinance change to make our penalty consistent with state penalty for that offense.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Any comments or questions related to actual physical control ordinance?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigle. Very good. Is there a second? Second by Weber. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item two point three. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Item two point three cares funding for the city of Grand Forks Health Department. Ms. Swanson.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee of the whole. You have before you a budget amendment for the Grand Forks Public Health Department. For cares nineteen cares funding for COVID nineteen response. The background is provided there for you on the staff report. This is funding that is federal funding that's coming to us through the state health department. Out of the eighty million dollars that the state health department has received, they're allocating about twenty million. Of those funds to local health departments across the state, recognizing that they have all had some extraordinary expenses over the last several weeks. And will continue to have expenses as significant amount of time is spent on these activities. Uh, you have before you the draft budget amendment, which is at this point a draft because we anticipate that. The categories may change slightly as we get further into the year. And then there's also some background on the funding and the federal requirements for guidance for state and territorial. Local and tribal health departments. And then lastly is. Our actual notice of funding award from the North Dakota Department of Health. We've had a number of meetings with the accounting office at the state health department to help us. With guidance in terms of what are allowable activities. One of the things that you may not have anticipated, but that we expect to spend a lot of time and energy on. Is getting ready for mass vaccination efforts when a vaccine becomes available. So we've placed a lot of our resources into that effort as well as the things that you may be have noticed already. This is the document that would need to be signed by our representatives, which in our case is the mayor and the city finance director. And I stand ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Does anyone have any questions related to the cares funding? Yes, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Sand, if I may, um, the, uh, this information is, is coming to us with, uh, with little overview. It's my understanding that this. A million fifty six thousand six hundred and seventy five is coming to the city for public expenditures. And the mayor's economic recovery advisory group has been advising, among other things. That recovery should first look to federal and state dollars before local dollars. Certainly, no one would want to stand in the way of. Public health expenditures to activate a vaccine program. On the other hand, I feel that city council. Need to have greater input into the design of this budget, including some of the initiatives coming out of the. The mayor's advisory group. So at this point, I would like to approve acceptance of the grant. For the one million fifty six thousand six hundred and seventy five dollars, but ask that we, uh, we work in conjunction. To develop a, a budget that reflects some of the city council's intentions for the recovery.
Uh, this is Ken. I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, and thank you, Ken, for the second. Point of procedure is, is yes, Ms. Marshall, you have a question?
Um, yeah, I just had a question for clarification. And that has to do with the funding for employees for FTEs. Is that a combination of funding for say contract employees to do new work related to COVID as well as. Supplanting some of the, the typical. Uh, general fund funding for staff who are devoting a chunk of their time to the COVID.
Ms. Swanson?
Members of the committee, Ms. Sandy, we are not able to supplant funding that has already been budgeted in general fund dollars. That's very clear. We also cannot supplant any federal funding. So we are using our allocated federal funds already at this time. Excuse me one moment.
It's the president calling. Are my cost?
Apologize for that. I moved to my basement because of the tornado warning and we have a landline down here. Um, in response to your question, we are not able to supplant any federal funds that we already received. And we also had a number of people that were working in grants and those grants, some of them allow the use of. Those grants to pay for the activities thus far, but some do not. So some of this funding will have to replace grant funding that we received. Overtime costs that we incurred, not for any of our exempt employees, however, and then it will be a combination of. Permit, those would be the permanent wages and then the temporary wages that you see in that line item would be for new contract employees. Largely doing things like quarantine and isolation, contact tracing, vaccination efforts, overall support to the department. I would expect the skill set for most of those employees to likely be people with public health background, public health nurses, nurses in general. People that have the skill sets to do contact tracing, those would be some of the employees. The funding is allocated only through December thirtieth, therefore they would need to be contract employees and it would have to be clearly identified that they are only to be. Employed through December thirtieth of this year.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
You have Ms.?
Ms. Swan? Um, just a follow up question on that. Would that help with our current staffing and? Um, you know, I imagine the current staff has been quite stressed through all of this in terms of overtime and hours worked. Would that help? Those permanent staff members in handling the workload?
The answer to your question is mock is yes, it would help tremendously. We have a number of people that have a lot of overtime hours. Some of those employees won't be eligible for overtime because they're exempt. And so it'd be our desire to be able to move people to a situation where they're not incurring a great deal of overtime. Plus, if you recall from our budget, a significant percent, more than fifty percent of our employees are funded with. Grants and they need to do the scope of work that's required in those grants. We're concerned about some of our public health activities being set aside during this time. So this would help tremendously for us to hire a workforce that can address COVID. With the leadership that we can provide and then allow many of our employees to return to the other work that will ensure that we have a healthy community going forward. And all of the other areas like childhood vaccinations and tuberculosis and many, many, many programs.
Mr. Veen, question?
Yeah, this one said, is this increased expenditure expenditure account as a part of these budget amendments? Are those both what we've spent to date and what we anticipate we will spend between now and December thirtieth?
The short answer is yes. Although you will see our expenditures on the spreadsheet that Maureen provided last week, it doesn't include all of our costs. So there's a lot of hidden costs that may not appear on our FEMA request. But yes, this would be also a combination of. The spent, the expenses incurred thus far for salary overtime and some supplies. And then it would also include things that we need to plan for in the future. You know, we fully expect that we could see a second wave of cases in the fall. And with influenza season, it's going to be very difficult to distinguish between influenza. And COVID, and so we're going to need to have a really robust flu vaccination program as well.
So, so the numbers you have here, did you manage those numbers, those amounts to, to match the one point five six or one point zero five six million? Is this, or is this short of what you would? At like if you could, or is it more than you would initially anticipate spending by year's end?
Well, the, the funding was allocated by the state health department on a formula basis. All health departments got a base amount. And then it went per capita based on your population. So some health departments may not have the full expenditures. I anticipate that we will have a million dollars in expenses, both. Previous to today as well as through the end of the year.
Yeah, I've just tried to, you know, in the end, we don't know what the number is going to be. Probably the only thing we know for sure is it's wrong. In the very end, because it's going to be either long or short. It, it's just that I was trying to, you're anticipating. Not needing any more than that right now, or did you, like I said, manage these numbers just so it would hit that? For the, for the benefit of being, making a budget versus what you think you will actually need in the long term.
I would have to say a council man being that it very closely aligns with your first assumption, which is that the budget was managed to accomplish. What? We've had expenditures thus far and also what we think will spend, but too closely aligned with the allocation. And that's because I have to have a budget amendment in order to have the notice of grant award actually established. And so without a budget amendment, doing our best work to determine what we will need and how we will spend it. To have a signature on the notice of grant award in order for us to begin spending the money. So it's not perfect. We do anticipate that we may need to move some money around, but it was. My best estimate of where the, the funding was going to be needed. Based on a number of FTEs, what we had spent thus far, and then calculating all the salary and fringe that's associated with that.
Have you thought of or considered if we were to develop a more expansive testing program internally? Would there be money in, in here as you outlined it to help finance or fund something like that?
Mr. Veen, that's a really good question and a pretty big unknown. Testing is. Really a moving target right now. Thus far, we have really concentrated our efforts on what's called the VP three, which is the vulnerable populations. And we've supported others' efforts to do that testing largely because the laboratory has a set amount of tests that they can do and they are managing all of that right now. When the state laboratory is able to continually increase, then we could do more large scale events. We would definitely need a lot more staff to carry that out. If you recall, the last time I reported an update to you. Our last large testing event, we had fifty five National Guard members. It would take an extraordinary effort if public health were to take on events like that. Currently, there are a number of organizations that are doing testing and our testing has really been concentrated on long term care, other congregate settings. But yes, I anticipate that we will have to have a, a number of people that will be able to continue to assist whatever testing is going on in the community, if not doing it ourselves.
Yeah, and, and I understand, especially if you did mass testing similar to what's been done in the past. But if we developed an optional new type of testing program, community wide, that we wanted to do on a local basis. As has been discussed in, in the mayor's task force. That's what I'm kind of, I want to have further discussion on beyond what you've already talked about in your budget amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Veenya. Mr. Weber?
Now, can I ask the, the degree of urgency on this? Is there a, a due date when this has to be submitted? For acceptance of the, the grant, for acceptance of the award, the award?
There isn't a due date, but we already have expenses. I think that would be important to keep in mind and we've already made a commitment. To staff because we are a little bit overwhelmed in terms of our overtime and overall effort. So I, I would really like to see it approved. I'm completely open to budget categories and more advice if you have significant contributions to make to the process of it. But I think for purposes of accepting the funding and bringing the money into the city so that we have the spending authority. I would like to see it sooner rather than later.
Very good. I'm noticing on the staff report. It, it outlines that the, these funds are for activities that will prevent and mitigate the spread of disease. Including targeted testing, contact tracing, isolation, quarantine, communication with public. And extensive coordination with the community, regional and state partners. And it feels like that is a piece that's missing at this point, the extensive coordination with the community. We were, uh, as, as a member of the council, I, I was not aware of this. I tried opening up the staff report on Friday. I believe it. Just became, I don't know. I saw it for the first time today. So how much flexibility is there? I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to move forward in a way that makes the funding available as soon as possible. But with maximum flexibility so that if council develops strategic initiatives in regard to this. That there is a funding to support those.
Can I hope clarify that, Brett? Let me ask a very direct question related to what your, is, is the budget, is there a budget required? In order with. Required to be provided with the application. Do we have to have a budget? Ms. Swanson?
Might be a question for the finance department. We don't have to have one for the state health department. But we will eventually need to upload a budget into something called the. Performance reporting system at the state level so that we can draw down the funds according to what our expenses are. So the, the budget can be uploaded later, but we do need to have authority of the council for the mayor to sign on the notice of grant award. That is before you. And Maureen, if you want to add anything relative to process. That would be helpful.
No, Debbie, I think you, you covered it well. I think we just, we need approval for Debbie to submit this forward. And just know that the budget amendment, as she said, we can make revisions to, to the budget as they move forward. But I think this is a general outline of how she sees those dollars.
Sure, I, I think you in general have support. Yes, Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, you know, I, I hear both sides of the conversation and then wondering if there isn't a, a resolution where. We could pass the budget along with the approval to submit the application. Knowing that we've got the council meeting coming up in a week. Would that give some time for some conversation between the committee and, and Ms. Swanson? And Ms. Dorsted relative to any immediate revisions, but you know, I'm feeling comfortable with, with approving it tonight. To move forward to council, knowing that, as Mr. Dorsted said. Revisions can be made to the budget at any time. So would that be a resolution to, to move it on to council and have that conversation within the next week?
I certainly think that that warrants further discussion. I, I think part of that. Follow up question from Ms. Swanson is how much of the money has actually been spent? How much are we paying back versus how much is new funds available? If it's all been spent and we're going to have twelve dollars left over, the budget's irrelevant.
We've done some preliminary assessment in the neighborhood of about eighty five thousand, I believe, to the health department. Now we may be able to recover some of that. Through FEMA. It's very difficult to know exactly what the expenses have been because it's spread across about. Maybe twenty five different sources of funding because as you recall, we have health department employees across many funds. So we did our best to determine what all those expenses were thus far, but I do believe we'll still have a very robust amount of money to work with. But we'll have a lot of supplies to purchase because if we don't get future funding after December, we have to be prepared for the months of January. Till whenever to continue to work on COVID. It's not going away quickly. It's going to be with us for a while and we are going to need funding to address it. And that will come in the form of salaries and fringe to pay the people to do the work.
Sure. Um, just for. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I'm completely open to suggestions that the council has in terms of process as well as initiatives for communication. And if we have not communicated with you enough, I'd like to hear more about what those ideas are. We have to keep them focused on public health response. And not economic response necessarily of the entire community. So it's, uh, it's going to be highly audited. This funding is, I think we just need to keep that in mind.
And just for my education, Ms. Swanson. Who, the people that are, who are these people that are working overtime? I don't need to know their. Their names, but what overtime are the people that are working in public health? What, what are they doing?
I'd be happy to provide you a list. A lot of it is, we've had people that have been working on communications. We attend up to seven meetings a day. With our state and local partners, our emergency response personnel. In the emergency preparedness division probably have the most overtime because they are responding to the entire region. Uh, we also have a, a number of staff that have been working at the jail. Two nurses that work there full time and one team leader that has been supporting the work at the jail to ensure that people are, are isolated there and now begin testing. Contact tracing has probably been the largest amount. And then we did also have an isolation and quarantine unit. That housed people at a local hotel and our staff was relied upon quite extensively for some case management, which involved. Weekend and evening calls and response to the individuals that were housed there. Those are just some of the activities, but we have. Time sheets, we've collected all of our information. Right away, we began coding all of our expenses. Supplies have not been great to this point because we have a wonderful state cash that's provided us with PPE. For almost everything that we've needed to do. But I expect that we have used up a lot of our local cash and will need to resupply that.
Thank you. And of course, all of those things in the, the items that those people are working on are very important for our community and I, I thank them for all of their hard work on behalf of all the people of Grand Forks. I do, however, agree with Mr. Weber. I wonder if more detail on the budget of what. I, I understand that we've already spent money and, and that needs to come back and maybe FEMA will be able to reimburse some of that, but I'd like to know a little more of the detail of where the. Where the money is going as well. I certainly don't want to short. Um, the public health department of needed resources and equipments, PPS and everything else that you need. It'd just be nice to know a little more of the detail if possible.
Dana?
Yes, Mr. Veen?
Oh Dana, I second this. I, I really wasn't questioning whether Swanson was put forward. I think she's done an excellent job of trying to look at the monies that have been spent and what she anticipates will spend till the next to the year. Or for the rest of the year. There's just so many unknowns between now and then. We don't know. So. I, I really don't question what she put as a probably a best approximation of where we think we might be. Of course, trying to match the one point zero five six million that we were going to get. My question was going to be, I think there are other things beyond this that impact public health that need to be addressed. I've been a part of and that's the testing. And, and the cost for implementing that and the urgency of doing that, which I do think helps impact. Public health out there too. Some of it may be economic, but public. And I just don't know if, if now is the time to bring that forward or to be discussing that between now and the next council meeting because I, I do believe. A substantial amount of money should be set aside for it. I think it's very beneficial for the city. I know Mr. Weber has worked diligently with that committee to try to develop some protocols, which I know he knows way better than I could and I will ask him to maybe repeat those. But if that should be separate from this, that's fine. I think we need to get that out on the table and I would ask Mr. Weber to do that.
If I may, Mr. Sandy?
Certainly.
Um, so one of the conclusions, a couple of the conclusions that have come out of the mayor's advisory group. Public health has to be number one, but we can't separate public health and economic health. The mental behavioral health of the community also requires economic health. Economic health requires public health. So these things are, are inseparable in many ways. Um, and the, while this is in some ways an economic development issue that we have a successful reopening of our economy. We should be looking to. we should be looking to federal and state dollars first. So one of the things that is recommended in the literature is a robust coordinated testing. And here in Grand Forks, we have a unique combination of assets. The University of North Dakota, the med school here, as well as some local entrepreneurs, business owners who are tied into some innovative testing across the country. So what's being proposed is not another committee of political celebrities, but that we bring together biostatisticians, experts in bioinformatics, infectious disease specialists, public health experts, of course, big data management, specialists in predictive analytics and disease pathologists amongst other experts to really make the most of the community's rich resources here. And that would be very consistent with the purpose of this money, an extensive coordination with community, regional and state partners. And I want to avoid the situation where we have politicians telling public health experts what to do, but there is a role for community and political leaders to be involved in that decision process. And so I'm hoping that there can be some of this money made available as the city council develops initial or initiatives and proposals for coordinated testing.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Weber. I tend to agree with you. The mayor's economic recovery committee is looking at an economic recovery plan for the city. And that economic recovery plan centers on having a safe community because a strong economic recovery means you have to have a very safe community, which marries the economic side with the public health side. And certainly, I agree with you. The intention of that group is not to circumvent any sort of funding that would be used for public health, but merely identifies ways where public health can help coordinate and potentially use funds in a way that would also help with the economic recovery. And any funds, I believe, that will be spent through public health will help with that. But if there are ways to leverage those dollars that help with the economic recovery and also get the benefit or the goal, meet the goals of public health, I think that certainly is an important, important decision. You know, the economic recovery group is looking at helping with policy decisions and helping ways, for example, that the University of North Dakota can make sure that all of the students are able to come back to our community because on the economic side, it's so important for our community. But of course, we have to have a safe community for them to come back to. And so I agree, I'm certainly not the expert on a budget for public health, but I think it would be great if we could have a conversation related to where are the dollars going to be spent? And here are the needs we believe we have on the economic side. Is there a way that we can marry them together that gets the results that both groups, both sides are looking?
Dana, if I could add to that a little bit. So I'd like to be able to do that at next council meeting next week. Obviously, I think we need the motion that we've made pass. My recommendation would pass what we've got. And between now and then, we look at what the other needs might be. And we looked at, look at it comprehensively. It's all about COVID. It would be also about the testing. And the testing is more than economic. It's both physical and mental benefits related to it too, that I think are very much part of public health. So I would, I just think that we've, we wanted to lay this idea thought out and then have the opportunity to work through it maybe and next Monday be able to vote on something if we can bring it back.
Mr. Sandy?
Yes, Ms. Dorsted.
If I could just add, as we do look at these ideas and if you submit them throughout this week, we'd just to let you know that we will just have to verify that the ideas are unallowable use of the grant fund. So just so you know, just to clarify, we always have to check that as to not jeopardize the grant funds.
Of course. And we also, we owe it to the folks that work for public health who have been working overtime. We owe it to them to make these decisions quickly. So I agree with you, Mr. Veen. I think we should try to, if it's possible, get this done by Monday. Ms. Swanson, do you have something to add?
And I can certainly do this offline, members of the committee, of the whole, if you wish, but I still need a little bit more direction as to what you want to see on paper between now and next Monday. Do you want a more robust detail for each of these line items in terms of how many positions and what they would be doing? Or do you want activity budgets or contact tracing, activity budgets for isolation and quarantine for testing for whatever? Because those will take a lot more time to develop. They are certainly things that we would expect to need. But if you are wanting that within a week, I need a little bit more information about what those ideas are and what the potential costs are. Right now, you can see the vast majority of our funding is in salaries, which is people to do the work that we've outlined on our staff report. So I just need a little bit more guidance and I'm happy to do it offline between now and next Monday with a little bit more emphasis to what you would like to see on paper. Thank you.
Ms. Weber?
Is it possible for the budget to include a set aside for future strategic initiatives consistent with the requirements of the award, but undetermined at this time?
Ms. Swanson?
Well, I think that's actually in the budget that you see because what we anticipate is those initiatives largely take staff time to carry them out. Unless you are looking at paying a contractor a large sum of money to do testing, as in you're paying for all the supplies, all the testing, all the time, then that would be a pretty significant expense. That alone would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And if that is what you're looking to fund, that would be something that we absolutely would have to have permission from the state health department to carry that out. Because right now they are managing a lot of the testing, but they're very anxious for additional testing to be available. It's just that the use of public funds to do testing for certain activities might not be allowed. But I'm happy to discuss that in greater detail.
Mr. Weber?
Also President Sandy, sorry, my video's not working.
Mr. Phelan, we didn't want to see you anyway.
I know, you didn't. I think I would ask, now you can see me. Thank you, Cheryl. Number one, we'd ask you to accept the grant award. I think that's the motion right now. I would accept the budget amendment as stated, knowing that you don't have to approve. You don't, I would just for now, because this is just a recommendation. Over this week, I think what you're asking for, there's most of the money, and the good thing is the money is not spoken for yet. That's the good news, right? What we heard tonight. But what you want to know within the permanent and temporary and overtime line items, because that's the vast majority of the funding, where is that being allocated to? Is it to contact tracing? Is it to quarantining? So if I'm hiring a new FT, just like you would do in the budget, if you're hiring a new FT under a contract, what is that person going to do? And how many positions? So instead of having, I would ask Maureen and Debbie, instead of having these lump sums in the budget amendment, you want it broken out to what are the primary activities? And it doesn't have to be down to the refined, but if we're spending, you know, X amount of $100,000 in permanent wages, from a conceptual view, where are those, what are those people going to be doing? Where are their policy priorities going to be working on? Right now, you wouldn't know where the priorities are, other than they're just generalized. If, because we have money towards, if we could set aside some money so that we need to make immediate, we'll say we need to make short and midterm decisions. However, long-term to me is between October and December. There's things that are going to come up. Could we set aside some monies? And I know a lot of it's going to be in personnel expenses. I think that's the challenge Debbie's having, is that once you hire somebody for a specific task, they're going to be doing certain things. So I think that's the conversation we need to have next Monday. Since most of it, of the dollars being invested are in people, what are those people going to be doing? What are their priorities they're going to be working on? Are there some things that we could lighten up with so that we could meet the goal of setting some aside in strategic testing, we'll say partnered with the state and federal government? I think if we could work on those sorts of things, it would illuminate more of what's in that budget amendment.
If I may, one thing that I've been requesting, and I feel like I'm shooting at the dark a little bit, I've been requesting the guidelines of this award. Is it possible for us to receive those guidelines?
The only guidelines that we have are the ones on the document that is on your staff report, right behind your staff report in the budget amendment. And that's the CARES guidance for state territorial, local and tribal governments. As you know, I did ask for additional guidance on whether or not research could be included in there. And that was evaluated by the Office of Management and Budget at the state.
Ms. Sandy?
Yes, Ms. Mock, I'm sorry.
I guess for most, I'm not sure if this is a question for Ms. Swanson or Ms. Dorsted, but for most of the CARES funding that I guess I've discussed with any other entity, the funds had to be spent and then they were reimbursed after they were spent. So you couldn't just set aside funds for something that wasn't budgeted and actually incurred before like December of 2020. Is that the same situation with these funds?
Ms. Mock, yes, that is exactly what we will be doing is demonstrating that we've had expenditures and that we will be doing a request for reimbursement, just as we do for all of our other federal pass-through grants.
Any follow-up questions, Ms. Mock?
Well, I guess, I'm not sure, Mr. Weber, exactly what you're, what plans you were getting at, but my understanding with a lot of these funds is that it must be budgeted, but it also must be spent between now and in this case, December. So we would have to have a program in place and actually have spent those funds in order for the health department to then file for reimbursement.
Well, if I, I'm looking at page seven of the staff report. And some of the things that have been proposed by the mayor's advisory group would come under the cost of providing COVID-19 testing, including serological testing. This is something that I don't believe is currently in the plans for, that I've heard from the public health department. Also expenses for technical assistance to local authorities or other entities on mitigation of COVID-19-related threats to public health and safety, expenses for public safety measures. So there's been a face covering study that's been proposed. It's been kind of branded as research and so not qualifying, although we're primarily seeing it as a public information campaign that would fit under these guidelines. So having, this is the first time I'm seeing the guidelines. And I think that what's being proposed by the advisory group is consistent with what I'm seeing here. But then the final approval comes from the state department of health. Is that correct?
That is correct. And Ms. Mock is correct in that if you embark upon a project and you haven't had approval necessarily and you submit it as a request and it's audited and it's not an allowable expense, then you do incur that cost. That would have to be local dollars or some other way in which it would be recovered.
Any other comments or questions?
President Sandy, I think if you could recommend accepting the grant with the associated budget amendment. And then at least it moves them both along. And then at the city council meeting, I think if there's a consensus to accept the grant, you can always defer moving forward with the budget amendment at that time. If the additional information doesn't satisfy you at that time, but at least we're moving forward with both. And with some further details to come on the budget amendment. And if on the budget amendment, you're not satisfied, let's, we can still move forward and find, and accept the grant and then come back with a further budget amendment that would satisfy city council, even if that's not approved next Monday.
So Mr. Weber and Mr. Veen, there's a motion on the floor to accept the grant without the budget. Mr. Phelan suggesting we include the budget amendment so that we can, assuming, I presume, so that we can make tweaks for next week if there are tweaks to be made. Are you willing to change your motion and second?
So I'm willing to change the motion with the understanding that the intention is to have dialogue about opportunities for the mayor's advisory group suggestions to be considered in the budget.
Mr. Veen, do you accept that?
Yes, I do. That's fine.
Any other questions related to this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that discussion. Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Item 2.4, Grand Forks Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP console expansion. Ms. Alt. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. My name is Becky Alt and I serve as your director of your public safety answering point. I'm here before you today to request approval for the acquisition of two additional radio consoles to place in the emergency operations center. This would be purchasing off of our existing statewide Motorola contract, which is part of the Siren project, would be facilitated through a change order through North Dakota IT. You may recall that we installed upgraded radio consoles in February, shortly before COVID hit. We installed six. And during the course of COVID, we placed two of those consoles down in the EOC to create what we call a clean PSAP. And that is allowing us to have an alternate backup PSAP in the event that we would have anybody become ill and we need to relocate to another site. But we are finding that we're busy and we'd like to get those consoles back. And so we have an opportunity to purchase two additional consoles and enhance the capabilities of the communications in the EOC. So it's kind of a win-win. This was discussed at our 911 Authority Board meeting on May 21st and approved. The consoles would cost $130,000. And we will be pursuing COVID funding since it is to act as a backup or alternate PSAP due to COVID concerns. And I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
President Sandy, I'll move approval.
Mr. Weigle moves approval, second by Weber. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Alt.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you guys do at the PSAP for our community. Item 2.5, project number 7978, reconstruction of South Washington Street from Fifth to First Avenue North. Decision document for underpass info item only. Mr. Cranko.
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. This staff report is intended to provide some advanced background information on the project. It's anticipated that at a future meeting, you'll be asked to recommend approval of the decision document and also select preferred alternative. Afterwards, the North Dakota Department of Transportation will review the recommendations and make a final decision as to which alternative to proceed with. The underpass itself was originally constructed in 1937 as a two-lane structure. The bridge was then expanded and the roadway reconstructed in 1964 to a four-lane divided roadway. And the lift station was also constructed at that time. Since then, there's been a number of rehabilitation projects on the roadway itself. Since then, there's been a number of rehabilitation projects on the roadway itself to extend the life of pavement, including the more recent Mill and Overlay project in 2018. Bridge itself is nearing the end of its useful life and requires either rehabilitation or reconstruction. The roadway has reached the end of its useful life and is anticipated to be reconstructed with this project. The storm sewer lift station, which serves the underpass, is currently undersized based on current design standards and has a number of maintenance challenges as well as safety issues with it as well. It's anticipated that the lift station will be replaced with the project. Currently, this segment of Washington Street sees just under 25,000 vehicles a day. It's anticipated that in 2045 that there could, the same segment will be seen just under 28,000 vehicles per day. The decision document itself is anticipated to have four main options with it. The first option is a new bridge that can support six lanes of traffic as well as a six lane roadway. The second option is construction of a new bridge that would support six lanes of traffic and only constructing four lanes at that point in time. At which point it could be expanded to six lanes in the future. The third option is construction of a new bridge that can support four lanes of traffic and construction of four lanes roadway underneath that. The fourth option is rehabilitate the existing bridge and then reconstruct the roadway with a four lane roadway. It's estimated project costs for these options range approximately from $11 million to $56 million. Funding for this project is anticipated to be 80% federal, 10% state and 10% local. Based on the range of those project costs, it's anticipated that the local share could range from just over $1 million to about five and a half million dollars. The project is currently programmed in the State Transportation Improvement Program or STIP for 17.6 million in 2022. This amount was actually based on the 2012 Washington corridor study that was completed by the MPO and costs were inflated to $2022. If an option is selected, which exceeds the programmed amount, the North Dakota Department of Transportation may not have sufficient funding available to construction the option in 2022. And so the project could potentially be delayed, canceled, or a less expensive option may ultimately be selected. This is an informational only item and no action is required tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Krinko. Are there questions, Mr. Weber? Yes, Mr. Krinko. For years, we've been talking about ways to create greater connectivity between the university and the downtown. And yet Washington remains kind of a moat for pedestrians and cyclists and even for public transportation. As we're going through the expense and and the 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 bother of reconstructing the bridge, which will be possibly in place for another, what, 70 years, 50 years plus? There has been discussion at different times about including a pedestrian or even a bus rapid transit designated lane alongside of the railroad track lanes. Is is that being considered at all?
I believe the decision document does not include anything for a bus rapid transit system. I believe in the past, the bus rapid transit system was aligned along Dyke Avenue, if memory serves. And that would require that the roadway in that location be lowered significantly further than where it's at in order to provide sufficient grade underneath it and sufficient vertical clearances. That is something I can definitely run past our our contacts over at the North Dakota Department of Transportation and see what what we might be able to see in that regard.
Very good. Thanks. Yeah, Mr. Cranko, just for one second, Mr. Veen, I'm sorry, you're next, but just for clarification. Dyke Avenue wouldn't need to be lowered. Your South Washington, the the underpass would need to be lowered to create clearances for that. Did I understand you correctly?
That's correct. Washington would need to be lowered in order to allow for an overpass of some kind on Dyke itself. That is correct.
I assume that the underpass would need to be lengthened significantly to make that happen as well, correct?
It would either need to be lengthened or you would have to have a separate structure, most likely.
Right. Great. I I for one like that concept, but I I don't know how expensive that's going to be. Mr. Veen, a comment or question?
Yeah, a couple of questions here. Mr. Krinko, you know, one of the other projects that has been on our transportation needs list for some time is potential grade separated crossing at Demers and Washington, which is obviously right adjacent to the bridge here. So it would seem like if we are going to do this type of rehabilitation or replacement. Do you know if any of that is also looking looked at to be coordinated with a future grade separated crossing? Because that would make this harder project than even what's noted. You know, in the staff report, especially, and I don't know that the number of lanes are going to be, but we've you know, that has been an ongoing issue that has been been talked about but not implemented. So it would seem like if we were to look at this comprehensively, we probably should look at how this might work with that separated crossing sometime down the road.
I I will apologize. I think my video was cutting in and out there, so I didn't quite catch all of what you ended up saying in there. But if what I caught was correct, you were talking about the intersection itself at Demers and Washington, correct? And coordinating that project with this underpass. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that would be what I would, what, yes.
Right. I believe what Mr. Veen is referring to is the MPO was studying that intersection. I don't know if it was a grade separation or if it was just realigning the the turn lanes and and the cross lanes. Either way, the MPO has been looking at that at that as well, correct, Mr. Veen?
Correct, correct. I I do believe the long term solution was a grade separation right there too. But more than just aligning the lanes. But somehow, I guess, as we're looking at this, I just want to see, I just want to ask the question, is it is it capable of addressing that other problem too? Because I don't want to construct this and then a few years later come back and reconstruct it to align with a a potential bridge at that location or grade separated crossing. And I would assume with six lanes, that impacts both the the businesses adjacent to it, both to the north and to the south of this. And there's some comprehensive alignment issues, property acquisition issues and all of that, which would probably be pretty extensive. If we look at, well, the first option, which is the six lane underpass.
And and you are correct in that the six lane bridge and the six lanes roadway does have the largest right away impacts to the businesses, both north and south of the project. Looking at the intersection itself of Demers and Washington, this project doesn't identify or address the issues at that intersection. And I do believe I'm I'm recalling that study that you're you're talking about that the MPO did. And I believe that there was one of the options and there was a continuous flow intersection. But this project would not, would hopefully end up stopping short of that Demers Avenue intersection.
Okay, yeah. And and I would think we're not going to tackle both those problems at the same time. We just got to make sure that when we do it, we're taking into consideration should something like that come.
I would agree. I think from my personal perspective, I would rather see us go bigger and plan for the future, knowing it's going to be significantly more expensive, but at least being able to be prepared for six lanes. I don't know how other people feel about that, but I certainly, we don't want to be putting a future council in the same situation where we're trying to figure out how we're going to move traffic north and south. I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
Dana, my comment is very much, I think, aligned with what you're saying. To do this project, I think you have to do a shoe fly where you actually have to physically build a second bridge for the trains to go on around while you're doing the first one. And it would seem like, hey, if you're going to be doing a shoe fly, why not do it all at one time and not have to come but do it and redo another shoe fly the next time you wanted to widen it again. So it seemed to be cost effective to do what you're talking about.
I will say, David, the the timing on this for the project, it's scheduled for 2022?
That is correct.
Yeah, and this has been on the City of Grand Forks's plan, long term plan for reconstruction for quite some time, correct?
That is correct.
But if they only have 17,000 or I'm sorry, 17,600, and that equates to 90% of the project, we obviously don't get to the $56 million total that the the larger project will will take, right?
Yes, that 17.6 million is well short of that 56 million. It's also a bit short on in regards to the other new bridge concepts as well. So if there was a desire to say go towards the six lanes or the the bridge that can support six lanes and a four lane structure, I believe that option was closer to 34 million. So that's that's approximately double what is currently programmed in the in the STIP.
Fortunately, we have Mr. Kuryanku, who's kind of a grant musician, magician with with these things. So. That is true. We are fortunate. I I do wonder if we have to put more funding locally into this project. I wonder where it fits on our list of priorities than related to all of the other major infrastructure projects that we've been talking about, because if we are going to have to put in considerably more money locally, how does that affect the other projects that we've been talking about from a public safety point of view? I think perhaps that's comment for another time when we can get together and talk about this. I think we, I know Mr. Weigle's been mentioning we should be talking long term, major infrastructure projects and what our priorities are. I think perhaps we should have another meeting, maybe in three weeks or so. Talk about that.
Also, President Sandy, could I ask David a question?
Yeah, please.
DOT, they did some reconnaissance on this on this bridge and you've just stated it's it's pretty old. Something needs to be done sooner rather than later. So some, an option needs to be selected from what I understand, something needs to happen at some point. And is it true to say the DOT may recommend or may allow us to recommend, are they going to make the final decision so we could recommend a six lane? And they could come back and say, no, we, I know we asked you, but it's, we're going to give you four lanes. Kind of just so that we don't elevate our expectations that we pass a motion. We send it to DOT and they and DOT doesn't say thanks for your your input, but we're going to do this. That would be my question number one. Number two, I I thought something was, we we needed to do something in the near term regarding this this underpass.
You you are correct that ultimately the DOT will have make the decision. However, as part of the decision document, we do have a voice as the city for what our our preferred recommendation would be. And so ultimately, they may come forward with the final decision to just do the rehabilitation and rehabilitate the structure and reconstruct the roadway, which based on the decision document should provide an extra 20 to 30 years of life on this bridge itself.
So theoretically, they could decide, you know, what they did on on the Kennedy and the and the Sorley bridges where you know, they could have been reconstructed, but they determined that those could be re I know the Kennedy Bridge had more work done on it than the Sorley, but they could come back and say, we think you can get by for the next 20, 30 years if we just do X instead of just building something brand new.
That is correct.
However, the 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 idea of the bus rapid transit or bicycle lane, there are federal dollars for alternative transportation that could be brought to bear in in support of a project like this, right?
The program that you're referring to is the Transportation Alternatives Program. And that is typically capped at about 290,000 for a project. So that that may be a a insufficient amount for a new structure.
So so Mr. Krinko, food for thought, just remind the DOT and the state that we didn't replace the Kennedy Bridge and we didn't replace the Sorley Bridge. And we saved the state and the feds tens of twenties or thirties of millions of dollars. So putting a little more money into this underpass should be a kind of a trade off.
So, Mr. Phelan, do you, are you suggesting that David should approach the DOT and temperature?
Yeah, I think I, and I I like the way that engineering does this. They bring it to you sooner rather than later, so you can put your fingerprints on it. And so I would ask David to say, hey, similar to what the DOT does to us, you know, you, we've come in here to get your feedback. We're hearing some some feedback that we'd like to go six lanes was was planned for for the next 50 years. And we know it's a bid zero sum. So if we get 50 million and they were anticipating getting us 20 million, we know they're take 30 million and some other project, but I think we should tell them sooner rather than later. And then if they want to break our heart and say, well, no, we're not, we we know that sooner, right? We don't, you know, spend our time for the next two months thinking we're going to do something and it's not even in the cards. So I think David following up the DOT is is a really good strategy, Mr. Sandy.
Very good. Any other comments for Mr. Krinko? I thank you. David, do you have your marching orders? Everything you need?
I do.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Phelan, for helping move that forward. Anyone else have any comments or thoughts? Thank you for that great discussion. I'm looking forward to seeing a new bridge and under overpass before I pass away. Item 2.6, series area, cities area transit safety plan. Mr. Bergman. President Sandy and members of the committee, what this is, is a safety plan that we are required to have now with all the safety accidents that have happened in other transit properties around the country. So this is a safety plan document that was put together for safety management, performance targets. And it addresses all the applicable requirements set forth by FTA for us to start following if we're going to receive any more funding. This has also been with the East Grand Forks portion of the transit, they have to be on this plan. It has been reviewed by the Public Transportation Agency for Safety Plans, and we're just waiting now for approval from our state DOT, the Minnesota DOT, and also our FTA partners. But it should be a final document. And so we just want to have this looked at and approved, if you would. Thank you, Mr. Bergman. It certainly was a very thorough safety plan. No doubt. I don't believe you missed any I's or T's. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments about the safety plan?
I'd like to move approval.
This Marshall approves the plan. Sarah Second, this Dockler? Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Thank you. It was a very thorough plan. Item 2.8, wastewater system communication equipment replacement. This Parvi, good evening.
Good evening, Councilmember Sandy, as well as the committee members. Tonight, I'm before you to ask for approval for purchasing equipment, its maintenance equipment, replacement equipment for our communication systems in our wastewater lift stations. So currently we have a radio system. It's outdated. It's been malfunctioning. And it really helps us monitor alarms. It's similar to our, or it's a complement to our SCADA system, the software that we're upgrading. So tonight, we've actually brought a couple quotes before you from Integrated Process Solutions Incorporated, as well as Micro Hard Systems, Inc. And so both of those purchases, we would need your approval for this evening as well as a budget amendment. So the purchase amounts are $45,233.58 from Integrated Process Solutions. And then Micro Hard Systems, Inc. is at $12,122.50. The reason we're asking for a budget amendment with that as well this evening is it wasn't something that was actually included in our budget. We're not sure that we'll actually need the budget amendment. But we wanted to bring that before you so it wasn't lost, you know, forgotten about in our year end transfers, et cetera. The staff has been working with AA2S on this as well as WFW, and this is the most cost effective solution that we have, and it's the easiest one to implement. We've actually had equipment that was purchased, the cell modem network was purchased and put in lift station one. That's our lift station on Eighth and Almonte, because we were having so many problems there. And then just over the weekend, the staff was continuing to struggle with it. So I told them if we needed to purchase equipment for each station, we would do that, but this is for all the stations, all the 46 plus lift stations and pump stations that we have. So we would purchase the equipment and slowly over the next So we would purchase the equipment and slowly over the next couple of months, get them all upgraded so that we no longer have the alarms, that, the false alarms that we get from time to time and that they were reading accurately. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Parvi. Do, do you, do we install the equipment ourselves, or do, is, do we use the vendor to do that?
Actually, we'll purchase the equipment and then we'll work with advanced engineering's technical staff, as well as our electrical department and kind of between the two of them, try to get it done within a couple of months because of the troubles that we've been having most recently.
Great. Any comments from Cow? Yes, Mr. Weigle?
Ms. Parvi, what are the monthly fees associated with, with all these being installed?
You know what? There is a monthly fee, and I'm not sure, I apologize, I might have to get that for you, Mr. Weigle. We did talk about that. The one thing that we can do, although that's not going to tell you the cost, the one thing we can do is we can add them on our fiber network as we slowly develop that across the city and then remove that monthly fee, but I'll have to check on that and get back to you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Ms. Parvi, do we currently have a, a monthly fee that we're paying for the current equipment?
With the radio system, I don't believe there is a current monthly fee with that. So it would be an additional cost as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd move approval.
Veen moves approval. Is there a second? Second by Dokler. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. There is no item 2.8, but I know we typically have last other business. Mr. Phelan, did you have comments this evening?
I don't have any this evening. Maybe I could say one. I'm sorry. The one thing I would like to place on the city council agenda is we have the NPN letter of intent and that runs out at the end of June. I didn't, I forgot that it was June, but I would like to place that on the city council agenda to extend that for another six months to the, to the end of the year. And maybe on Monday also, I can give you an update on where we're at regarding NPN too. So that'd be the only thing I didn't put on tonight's agenda, if I want to give you a heads up, that I, I'll, I'll put it on the city council agenda and pull it and, and give you as much of an update as I have at that point in time. So that's my only update for this evening, Council President Sandy.
Or anyone else have any other items for discussion? I think we were talking about the agenda or the schedule of events. As people know, tomorrow's election day. I hope everyone's sent in their ballots, or if they don't, they do it, they postmark them tomorrow. We have a city council meeting a week from today on the 15th. And that would be with the current city council, correct, Mr. Phelan?
That is correct.
And then we technically have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for the 22nd, which again would be with this committee. And then the 23rd, by law, the 23rd is the swearing-in of the next council. So if I recall correctly, this com, committee or this council would meet and we would, so, you know, the mayor would, the current mayor would call the meeting to order and then we would adjourn, send aye. And then the next council would, would be sworn in on the 23rd. With whomever the mayor is as well, we would look to affirm the city attorney as well as, is, I can't remember if the judge is up for election. The city, municipal judge is not up for election. So the question is, for the 22nd, Monday, the 22nd, if there will be many items for the agenda, or if we shouldn't just push that. I know Ms. Marshall, I'm sure, would hate to miss another meeting. But we could pit, push to Monday, the 29th and have a committee of the whole meeting on the 29th, or we could not have a meeting the 29th as well and simply have a meeting on the next council meeting. So I'm, I'm interested in people's opinions on that. Are you interested in having a committee of the whole meeting, either the 22nd or the 29th? Ms. Storsted, do you know if there are any items that are of utmost importance?
I, I do not, President Sandy, members of the committee, for the 22nd cow items. I believe we'll discuss that at Department Head tomorrow, if there's anything time-sensitive to bring forward. I did just want to clarify a comment as far as the election, it actually would have to have been postmarked today. So if you haven't done that, it will need to be dropped off. There is a Dropbox at the county building tomorrow by four o'clock. So I did just want to clarify that.
That's important information. Don't wait till tomorrow.
So if you haven't gotten it in the mailbox yet, please just drop it off at the county building. There's a Dropbox there. I also just wanted to make you aware that the, I, I believe the county has scheduled the canvassing board for next Monday at 10:00 and then we get the results to certify at your meeting next Monday, the 15th. So that will, you'll have that on your agenda as well to certify those election results.
Excellent. That Dropbox at the, the county is on the north side of the building or the river side of the building. It's right kind of hooked inside the parking ramp. So if you drive through the parking ramp area next to Rambus Guys, you can drop your, your ballots. Any, any thoughts?
Yeah, Mr. President Sandy, I, I don't anticipate, we're going to meet tomorrow, but I don't anticipate a large volume of items for your committee of the whole. So if you wanted to defer those to that first city council meeting and just go have them go directly to the city council, we're certainly willing to do that in lieu of a, a 22nd or a 29th committee of the whole. But we aim to serve you. So if you, you want to have the cow meeting, I, I suspect we'll have 10 or less. I suspect most of them will be engineering-type items. They're still going to get approved at the same city council meeting, so it's not a timing issue because they're still going to get final approval at that first city council meeting in, in July, whether we have a cow meeting on the 22nd or 29th. So it's not a timing issue. It's just whether you want to, you want to have a briefing meeting before it goes to.
Well, do those items need two meetings? If they need two meetings, we could run a cow meeting before the council meeting and then go right into the council meeting as well.
Yeah. Yeah, you could do that too.
I think it all depends on if Ms. Marshall wants another meeting or not.
Makes no difference to me. I'll attend if there is one and participate, and if there isn't, that's fine.
Well, Mr. Phelan, why don't you, through your staff meeting tomorrow, identify if we need to have one? If we do need to have one, why don't we run it prior to the city council meeting, the first week of July?
Okay. We will do that. So we'll have a, a cow meeting that would go right into a city council meeting.
Great. Any other thoughts for the good of the order? Ms. Marshall, thank you for your last committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Seeing no other comments, all those in favor to adjourn. Is there a motion by Weber? Thank you. Dokler seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall should have made that motion though. She can make motion next week.
Okay.
All opposed. Seeing, hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.